For November twenty second, two thousand and twenty-one. We're gonna conduct this meeting as the full procedures adopted by this board. And unlike the emergency, like the event of her seat, the exit over here and an exit over here, please calmly get out the closest exit possible.
I'll lead the way.
Yeah, my introduction of the board staff. Down here we have Jill Tardy, Todd Ruthven, I'm Jeremy Marshall, Tom York, and Julie Benz. Director of the board is Sarah. We have Ron, Director of Development, Sony and John Wannenmore, and Dan down there is Gordon Torstman. Oh, please stand for pleasure. Pleasure agents.
To the flyer of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, everybody had a chance to see the minutes, issue an email to you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? A motion? Is there a second?
A second.
Tom, motion by Tom, and second by Tom, all favors certified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I attest to the publishing of the public notices, there was none for this month. And we're gonna continue the public hearing. Or ZB one zero zero two dash twenty-one, Scott Harder. I have the, I have the wish to erect a three thousand four hundred fifty-six square foot accessory structure of barn in the front yard portion of the lot located on six forty County Road eight. In the town of Farmington. Town code requires all accessory structures be located in the rear portion of the lot. And it is zone resident, rural residential. Is there anybody here to speak for or against? Just state your name before it be yours.
Well, Scott Harder, I was here last week presenting the application. Tim Lockman was here as well as neighbor Chris Wade. Perhaps I can just recap from where we were last time. Last time, as I recall, we spoke about creating what we call a mini site plan to show you the location of the barn where we propose it. Where it's desired versus the location that will be compliant. And so we created a drawing showing those two locations for contrast between one versus the other. The one that is desired is, is most optimal from the standpoint of access. And a variety of other things, some of which I identified in a letter that I sent off on November twelfth. And we did a voice call to compile some other metrics associated with that. I guess the major, well, one of the major aspects of the location of the barn, not only from the standpoint of ultimate access, but also Chris, the neighbor of the south, he has a, a new shed, if you will, across the rear yards there. Not only a new shed to Tim's property, but it's also a new shed on to versus properties on Tim's property. The compliant location directly interferes with that. The aerial photograph in the drawing, we did show that quite clearly. In addition to that, it's more difficult to put in a compliant barn, a compliant location versus where we show it. I can give you a few particulars if you would like, in terms of justification metrics, based on the drawings that you see before you. For the compliant location, driveway must curve in order to reach the building. Whereas a straight direct approach has shown the desired location is much more useful, practical and safe. The driveway square footage is three thousand and fifty square feet compared with the desired location, that means fourteen hundred and twenty square feet, so sixteen hundred and thirty additional square feet of driveway is required in this comparison. Resulting culvert from the driveway connection creates a low point for drainage structure capture and is not desirable in this area for a future use perspective, both to the house. The existing transfer, the existing power transformer is a concern in addition to the general access around the residence. This is for the compliant location. Also for the compliant location, the hillside must be cocked to fit the driveway as shown. This results in additional excavation, land disturbance, and is likely to intercept ground water springs such as has happened in the past. The drainage swale for the compliant location follows the south boundary line and needs to be about two hundred and eighty lineal feet long versus a hundred and twenty-five in the desired location, so a hundred and fifty-five additional lineal feet of swale and related excavation is needed for the compliant location. The distance from the northeast corner of the proposed barn at its desired location to County Road eight. The west boundary line on County Road eight, which is coincident with the front lot line on the subject parcel, is seven hundred and seventy-nine feet. The distance from the same point to the compliant location is nine hundred and forty-two feet. The distance from the northeast corner of the proposed barn at its desired location to the property line, which is the rear property line of homes six forty-six and six fifty-two, is two hundred and ninety-four feet. The distance from the same point on the compliant location to the same location is four hundred and fifty-eight. Those are the metrics based on the drawings that you're watching. I wanted to present that information to you because I thought it was of interest and I thought it was something that you could consider for justification of variance to rest. I'm not sure if you have any questions for me, or if you'd like to hear perhaps from Tim and Chris, or what you'd love to do.
Are there any questions from the board? Could you do a cost analysis between both locations?
We didn't do a cost.
I do have verbals. I had verbals, I, I had a contractor come on site to just look at the throw. So the verbal for the, for the requested location is between thirty-eight hundred and forty-two dollars for thirty-eight hundred and forty-two hundred for site work. And the, the two code, the one from the back and doing the cutting to the tunnels between seventeen-five and twenty-five.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from staff? There's volumes up here? No? No, sorry. Thank you.
Before I leave, would it be helpful at this point, or perhaps at a later point, to go through the five criteria that the board considers, or is that something that you?
You can do the lighter.
Okay. The five criteria, I believe, the board wants to evaluate. One was number one, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. And I think the answer to that, I believe, we want to present the answer as no. In terms of the immediate neighbors are in support of this project and they recognize the value of the project and they recognize that it's cited in a good location. It takes into consideration any other concerns. In particular, Chris Wade is the neighbor most affected, he serves life and he's in support of the variance. Whether the benefit can be achieved by some other feasible methods where the applicants pursue other than an area variance. If, if we wanted to put it up on the hill, it could be put up on the hill, I think we all understand that. It doesn't make sense for us to put it up there for the reasons mentioned, I mean, in fact, to the neighbors. And the environment is much less disturbed by the location we have presented. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, you can use the numbers that I presented to you to consider whether you think it's substantial or not. I would say a barn personally that is that far off the highway, that is that far away from other joint properties, does not pose a substantial area variance request. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. I was looking for the word neighborhood when I read through this. I think the neighborhood, the immediate neighborhood is satisfied with the proposed project. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration shall be irrelevant to the decision of the board of appeals, but not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. I would say that the alleged difficulty is self-created by virtue of the project itself. I will very few projects that come forward before any sole warrant, that are not self-created. So those would be our responses to those five criteria that you used to balance the benefit to the applicant versus the detriment to the barn.
Great, thank you. Any last ones, speak for, just state your name and have at it.
Christopher Wade, I spoke to you last time, we had a meeting about this project. And, you know, I guess I just want to give you a quick that I'm all for. I believe that the only impact on any neighbor would be me. Now, when we sit back far enough from the road, my house is, you know, a little bit in front of Tim's, but we're pretty parallel. I have two barns next to my house. And if you were to put Tim's barn where the code requires, it's gonna put it way out of place of the two that I already have. I have a barn here, and a barn that sits like this. Tim's requested place would set the barn almost behind the barn I have, so they would all be in a row. I believe that the aesthetics through the road would be much better than to have them out of place. There's also a hedge row, as you can see in the pictures, I imagine, between like Tim's dad's house, Mr. Mayor's house, and part of my property, and where the proposed barn is. Which is full-sized trees, it's not a hedge row, it's brush, I mean, they're thirty-foot full-sized trees that are blocking both my barn and the barn that Tim's talking about building from the road. So the impact to any other neighbor is not existent. The impact to me, if they build it up where your code says, is gonna block my view of my property that's behind Tim's to the west. So I guess, you know, a final note is that we're asking for this together as neighbors. We've talked about it a lot, and, you know, I hope that they'll pass it for us. The only other note is, you know, not for nothing, but as I left the last meeting, driving around Farmington, there is other barns in front of houses, and there's a few right around us. Right on County Road eight, there's one, a big one, I hope road, off March Road. So the variances have had been given in the past. So, you know, bottom lines, I hope you let them do it. Thank you, is there any questions from anybody?
Board got any questions? Questions from staff?
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, Tim Lockman, I'm the resident requesting the variance, I certainly appreciate the board's time. So I know this is a holiday weekend, the neighborhood has some great things given, but certainly appreciate the time. If Tom's been into this, then the board should come at us here, it's ninety percent, sorry. So, in, in general, what my feeling about this is that, you know, I wanted this barn in this flat spot. We did have a board member come up and I tried to explain the other day, when people here get built on this hill. I, I think what may be missed is, is to go back to the aerial photos, there, there was a barn that sat there, we talked about that barn and Tim came out last time. Chris helped me tear that barn down, that barn was an old, kind of fallen apart horse barn. It was something I stored some of my things in during construction, and we had it down below the floor, because it was built right in front of the house. That was the flat spot on the land, I didn't look at a hill and go, I just want to cut a big hole in a hill and try to deal with this the rest of my life. Where we're proposing this is also a flat spot of that. So this is, there's flat spots that are much worse down in front of me, much closer to the road. To get to the back of my property, I think sometimes people will rest in that I own all my back, Chris owns part of the field, you know, a fair amount of the field behind me. So this, this looks to me like the optimal place to do it, it was always my hope to be able to, to do it here. So I certainly appreciate everybody hearing this, I, I, I do feel that we're doing the right thing by the land, by the environment, and by the neighborhood. So I, I look at my neighbors, I talked extensively, we've sat down to discuss these things. This night I've certainly talked the most, but the gentleman at six fifty-two, County Road eight, the mayor, he's talked about this in support of it. My father is, I don't know if that matters to you guys, it's still a resident, he is my dad, but he certainly is supportive as well. And I think I would just ask that everybody kind of puts herself in my situation. I have a situation where I have a neighbor who actually opposes this, not built to go. So, or, or built to go. So to, to, to say, to come in there with my neighbor, I didn't know what Chris was gonna say when we first started talking. Certainly there's things that we talked about compromising on, and Scott and I worked with Chris to make some compromises. And, and I think both of us now are very happy with the plan we put together to compromise, put it in a place where there's the least amount of effort as far as disturbance to what we need to do. And looking at it in an area where it's, where it's much more difficult from a cost standpoint for many, disturbance costs and things like that. But I think if it was anybody else's neighbor and you were asking for this, how would you feel if you're, you know, you then feel if, if it is denied, if you've, you've not granted that variance? They don't even want to go with that. So I think that's a difficult situation though, that I'm kind of fixed. But again, I, I thank you for the, for the board's time.
Thank you. Thanks. Any questions from the board? Any questions from staff?
Hey, one, one question. Is that, if that barn did go in the back there, is that gonna be higher than your house?
Yes. How much higher?
Depends on how, where that compliance line, or how far, or. How, how high is the ridge, sixteen foot?
So sixteen foot walls, so I think that makes it a twenty-five, twenty, twenty-four cent feet.
Twenty-four.
It's twenty.
Four is your house.
It's two feet shorter than my house, I think.
Yeah, two feet shorter than mine.
So it's gonna be roughly five feet higher than my house, I believe. Because, because the cut into the hill, I believe, to build it to, to, to the compliance place is around sixteen. Cut into the hill, but that's raising as it goes back behind my house, so. I, I do think it's, I know it's very close out to the, to the height of my house, I know it's built where it is, because that, that field is actually lower than my house, by about three or four feet, that's why we ran a little downhill driveway to it. So that would make it definitely smaller than the house could give for, for sure.
Okay. Any questions, Dan? I'm there, question. What's the square footage in your house?
Uh, it's twenty-five thirty-three, but it's, we have an unfinished room in our upstairs, it's a thousand square feet. We have another, I don't know, like, it's a square feet above our garage, that's unfinished square feet. It's just, that may be for future storage, really, they may have ability to open a window, so. Roughly, it's, it's built with, with our unfinished basement where our storage area upstairs, they're roughly the same, it's about thirty-five hundred square feet.
Any other questions?
Do you consider building it in line with the house, if the neighbors starting from it? Is that, is that the code?
That was one of the suggestions that was mentioned about the neighbors. Brian Mark with the front of the house, and that would be the structure similar where Chris has a right to property right now.
Would that reduce the cost in building it, people that, in line with the house, I know, so we're going to build it down flat then, would it be cheaper in building it in code compliant, all the way back to the house?
Uh, there would still be additional, there is, in the field that we're building it, when we, the initial proposal we prepared for last meeting, had it cutting a little into that field, so we've actually moved it in basically at, Chris is requesting to optimize the site, about twenty-five feet from there to the east. Once we get to a certain spot, it's kind of a big role, and that is before next to the house. I, I will say this, it's not, I, I think that there's just different people that I've talked to. So, Sony, when you came over the other day and John and I, we talked, we talked about a little the interpretation that Dan had about the in line with the house, up until that day, I've always been told it has to be behind the final plank. I've never been told it could be next to. So I understand it now, I'm not taking issue with that, I just know that when, I had another drummer from Florida first about over June. And he's like, no, behind final plank completely, you can't build that next to your house. Yes, Chris did, code has changed, you can't do it. So to hear that is a bit of news to me. There, there would still be additional driveway, additional cost, there would be more cut into, again, that's where it really starts to slow.
The applicant was instructed that he could meet with staff and discuss this before this meeting. No meeting was set up with staff.
And I, and I think the reason we didn't meet and take advantage of that opportunity was partly because of the neighbor Chris and wanting to put the structure in a location that was satisfactory to the neighbor.
The, this is exactly why we liked to meet, because there might have been a middle ground that we could have presented it to staff to this board about moving it to the front plane, is that code compliant? No, we always hit the back plane, but I could have easily sat here and said, this is a more, I think the number three is what you're saying, is the substantial. I mean, this whole barn is in the front yard, so when we look at substantial, it's not a dollar that we're looking at, we're looking at variance to the code. This is a hundred, over a hundred percent variance, that's a substantial variance. When I look at something that's lined up in the front of the house, yeah, it might be in the side yard, but that would probably be way under what we consider substantial.
So hearing that, Tim, is that something you want to explore before we go forward, or do you want to move forward with what we got? Up to you.
I, I, I just don't think it's the right thing by my neighbor. It's still, it still puts it well within his view. And I do, I do think, I understand Dan's suggestion there in, in the meeting and the compromise. I think where the decision was made that not having that meeting to make a compromise, we were heading the other direction. We were moving the barn to the east to try and work for, for number one, when, if we could show, we don't have it here on the shore, but the original location, there was some topography we're gonna have to deal with, we optimized the site by, by moving it twenty feet. We also optimized that to the neighborhood request as well. They said, boy, if it lined up at mine, we all sort of line, it, it, it fits the neighborhood, it lines with the neighborhood. And I really think that that was the, the spirit of, of, of the change. So I understand the, the desire to have a meeting to compromise, and I think John and I actually could talk about this when we were on site the other day. You didn't see compromise, you sort of went the other way, and, and I think going the other way was to optimize the, the land for the least disturbance to the land, and also to, to make a compromise with my neighbor.
So I just want the board to know that the applicant's saying that he didn't listen to the recommendation of the board. And he's also increased the substantial of this variance.
Can I ask a question? Definition of substantial, what are you considering substantial?
Substantial is anything fifty percent over what the variant, what the town code says. So if you want, give me a good example, did I say that right?
Absolutely, you said it perfectly. So if the town code says that you can be behind the plane, but the building's only ten feet past that plane, you're only ten percent encroaching of the whole building. You put that whole building in the front yard, so it's, the whole thing is now a hundred percent. And the farther you move it forward, the more of a, you're, you're even farther over a hundred percent, I guess.
So, so I've seen boards, in my experience, define substantial differently. I've seen boards take a look, for example, at the dimensions I presented tonight. Take a look at how far the barn is, for example, from the highway under one scenario versus how far away it is under the other scenario. And take the two numbers and compare them, and/or do it from like the side property line that I presented. And take a look at those numbers, and then come up with numerically the justification that way. I understand what you're saying, I just want you to know that based on my experience appearing before other zoning boards, other towns, Ontario County and the road. Substantial is determination made by the board, is what they consider substantial, usually those numbers that I present are numbers that they use in coming up with a determination that way.
Okay, so the issue with us doing that outside in Sardan is that our code doesn't say that not in the front yard for a house that's fifty feet from the road. It says not in the front yard. So using those numbers doesn't really help in the case, because the code says it's not allowed in the front yard. Now, if you were to say, if the code were to say it's not allowed within a hundred feet of roadway or the front yard, then we could say, okay, you're only fifty feet from roadway, then you get percentages. But the biggest thing with this code is it says one hundred percent, no accessory structures are allowed in any front yard in the town apartments. That's what the code says in all districts and residential lots. So that's what we gotta stick with at this point. Some of the barns that, that I think Chris saw and stuff are those a hundred-year-old, two-hundred-year-old barns. There's a few that people have argued for agricultural or that have been pre-existing. We could have find, at least in this district, any variance that had been approved. We actually did find one of the neighbors that wrote the, a letter wishing to not get this approved, was a neighbor that got denied a similar variance. Granted, their barn was, I think, within thirty feet of the road, or yours is still three hundred away, but overall, code just looks at it as it's in the front yard. And that's what, you know, I think we had this conversation on your property where that's kind of the hard part, where the hands get tied here is currently the town code says nothing in the front yard, not within a percentage of the front yard, not within a footage of the front yard, it just says front yard.
I understand that the code says that, I, I, I get what you're saying, but I think maybe the disconnect here is, is the whole purpose of the zoning board of appeals and how they interpret it, because after you guys do your thing and you evaluate it, you hand it over to them. And then what they determine is substantial, and their deliberations is a governing force, and not necessarily, excuse me, your definition of substantial. You've done your job, you flagged the need for variance here, I get that, I think we all get that.
And part of our job is letting the board know what the town has done in the past to prevent them from opening themselves up to an Article seventy-eight hearing for lawsuits from the previous three or four that they've denied in the past year, to then all come in and start going after the board for similar things. The board should be not uniform, but similar in their approvals and their denials, or else they're shining a precedence, and they're changing town code for spot zoning, which is illegal in New York State, and changing town code is up to your elected officials, time you're appointed for.
Um, maybe this is a discussion item, but I've never seen an area variance ever confused with spot zoning, I haven't seen a used certain things confused with spot zoning. And I would also mention that every application is uniquely different, and that not necessarily precedent is being set. Every application that goes forward is subject to this review process, and deliberations by this board specific to that piece of property. I've never seen two pieces of property that have ever been.
I mean, I haven't been a resident for forty-four years in Farmington, I will tell you. I, no, I haven't owned the house all that long, I mean, but forty-four years I've lived here. I know four people that have asked for this variance, and I know two denied and two. So I, I, I will say, no, I'm not, you're, you're right, I don't want to talk about the last year, things like that, I, I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't keep up on the minutes of what's happened here. Here, but, but I do know people that have been to rankings, and I do know two people that have.
Dan couldn't find anybody that were approved, and I could have helped your case if you could have told us we could find them. But they also might be different zoning districts, you're in the RR eighty, there's a lot of A eighty that's up there, that's where a lot of the farmland is, and that might be where these were found, there are some in the A eighty from years ago. But also the code would change, I think, I mean, I guess today, there is, the, this code wouldn't affect maybe within the last fifteen, twenty years now. So if they're older than that, they might have a group re-oh, but I can't kind of speak on that, because I don't know what properties you're talking about. Any other questions from the board, or from staff? You got one?
No, I, I mean, a lot of what they're discussing with us would have been handled in a staff meeting, and that's why this board always recommends those meetings. So that, obviously, we, you're absolutely right, the decision is with the board, but we sit in all their meetings and we understand what they're looking for. So meeting with staff is highly important.
This is what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna ask you, Tim, do you want to meet with staff? Or do you want, I'm gonna close the public hearing, I don't ever get it to, to, to that decide, I'm gonna let you decide, you want to meet with staff? Or do you want to roll and see what the board does, it's up to you. And so I'll tell you, I have no problem back in December, I will keep this open, I have no problem.
I, I don't think, I don't think we want to be in the position of not meeting.
I, okay, so we'll keep this public hearing, I can be, I can keep open, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna keep the public hearing.
You're asking for additional information?
Meet with them, see if there's anything to come up with, and we'll make a decision December. Alright?
Well, then, call, call the office to set up a time that's in your court at this point. So whenever you reach out, Sarah is our clerk, she could set that up. I would say after the holiday here.
Don't always wait.
But again, that's, that's in your court, have your discussions, and then you need to set up the meeting with us, and we will have all of our staff, probably comments in here sitting so that we can look at all the avenues, especially the storm water.
Hey, Tim, you can bring a cost analysis too.
Sure, well, tell them a call from the, from the.
Just as a heads up, I think we're also looking at not just the compliant spot, but all the compliance, because there are, I know we talked about the other side of your house, which is a nice place to build it, but also puts it out of your neighbor's view, and it makes it in a compliant spot. Yeah, it's gonna cost more if I have that, and the cost estimates on that, and everything like that, that's gonna help show why the compliant ones aren't gonna work, because if you don't show that, that's gonna be another thing we're asking, why can't be, like I asked you last time, why can't we put it there? It's not ideal, it puts it out, it's a dis. It's not ideal, it puts it out, it's a disadvantage for you, I wouldn't want it there personally, but we got to show why it doesn't affect, we need stuff down on paper so we can show why your application, like I said, is different than every other property in your zoning scheme. So what I'm, so what the board is asking, is you meet with staff during this month, and see if you can find out the best compromise alternative is. It could be what you had planned, it may not be, let's just take a look, see if we got all the information to be to make the decision. Okay? All right. Any other board matters?
Any motion to table?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to table this, or no, December?
One maybe, one more thing. Is there anybody on board?
Okay, has anybody asked you, or is there anybody online that wants to speak for or against us?
Online, sorry, Richard Dad. There was, there was a random cell phone on there.
All right. Hearing none, all right. You have a motion and a second table list on December? All favors say.
Who made those motions?
I made it in December.
Thanks, I, I missed it.
Okay. All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And so we're table to tell December. Public, any, public comments? Hearing none. Director, the dollars update.
The other thing I want to update is we, we did have the first. We did have the first workshop with the solar committee. Your representative, Jody, was there. There were people in the audience, as well as people online. And they know that the next meeting is Monday, December sixth, six-thirty here, in this room. There will be a second draft posted on December first on the town website, which will incorporate comments received as a result of the first workshop. And it would, we hope that that would take care of the need for workshops, so that we could move on to getting this thing to the town board for their consideration forward and the plan. Keeping in mind that we have to deal with a timeline, February tenth, which makes any decision in February because of the meeting dates, the town board, the county planning board, deadline, and more time to not work. So we, we didn't hear an awful lot, we did get a lot of good comments from the members of the committee, the residents, correctly, by law, Jody, I won't recall an awful lot of discussion.
No.
Other than some saying we couldn't hear anything. But anyways, that's where we're at. The only other thing I'll, I'll add into the record is that we did receive from the court, an appeal to the judge's decision on Delaware River Solar. That now goes to the District Court of Appeals up in Rochester. And that could take, who knows how long, but have them put their position together, then we rebut it, then they act on it. So meantime, Delaware River could move forward with starting construction up there. The court did not place an injunction on that for anything.
Thank you. Code enforcement.
I'm all staff, but maybe it's only on serious. We have a meeting next month, we have two applications now, either have a new one, I think you have this one. The new one will be posted by the end of the day tomorrow, onto the shared folder, so we'd like you to jump on it, otherwise it'll be sent out the normal time, and for anyone else, I am on vacation that week, so, and the week before, so if you have any questions or anything for me, try to get them to be before the Tuesday at noon, before Christmas. Is that out? Obviously, I'll still try and check my emails from you guys, and stuff like that, and I'll make sure I check it before the meeting for last minute things, but.
So that's something we're going to stretch to the applicant also, because of the holidays, we're going to be very short-staffed, and this applicant seems to like to embark us with things at the last second, so we're going to try when we meet with him to get everything to you guys, so that you have time to review, that's our goal. And I would highly recommend that maybe when you guys do your rules of procedures, that you may put a timeframe in there about how soon before meeting that we can accept this. The planning board is, if there's twenty-four hours before, is their cut-off. Anything that's submitted after that, the board doesn't act on that. Couple reasons, I mean, it's tough on staff, and then obviously for us to get to you the same day for you to review it and be prepared for your meetings.
That's a great idea.
So. Just something to think about, and you might want to start looking at dates in January to possibly, unless you're going to incorporate it with your regular meeting, to do your rules and procedures. I don't know if you want to go to workshop to do rules and procedures, or kind of just walk on it during your regular meeting.
Let's discuss it on December twenty-seventh, maybe, when you guys want to do that, the rules and procedures.
Might be able to come in an hour before your.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, but.
If we have a January meeting, and there's nothing on the agenda now, but we're still, around the radar, but we're still really early.
My recommendation to, we'll decide on December twenty-seventh, to do a one-hour workshop prior to the January meeting, if there's no meeting, we'll still do the workshop, and and that's my, think about it, we'll decide on December twenty-seventh.
The other thing, if I could, for you, Jeremy, if, when we schedule this meeting with the applicant, if it does happen to fit in your schedule, we'll send you the date, if we put a ten, yeah, we kind of see.
If I'm, if I'm in town, I'll be there.
All right, we'll make sure we include you in the discussion.
Also, keep in mind, you have an open clerk of the board position, we have a full board now, Sarah's really want us to find somebody, so.
Tonight?
Go with somebody.
She got a, she got an environmental impact.
That's right.
Please, Sarah, you know, oh, we do appreciate you filling in, Sarah. All right. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I got one, one thing I want to add, and that is to put it in the record. The board did meet tonight to train the second half of their credit, and everybody was in attendance, so I will send an email to RC and we meet here tomorrow.
All right. Next ten to the date, oh, next date is December twenty-seventh. Your motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
My second.
All favors say, if I may say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, per adjourn.